I'd like to open up the first session meeting for October 26, 2020. First item tonight is that apply 21 budget amendment. Matt?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have budget amendments relates to various line items. BJ, I'll turn it over to you for discussion.
Good. So this is something we bring to council annually. What these are outstanding purchase orders, it's kind of a housekeeping item. Unfinished projects or money that's been accrued for future projects. Many of these items are previously approved by town council. And they just said wasn't able to be finished by June 30th requesting that the money be carried forward. Some of the money, like I said, is being accrued for the project to be done in the future. So again, we're just wanting this money to be carried forward. I'm not going to go through the project or the list in detail, but if there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer them to this ability.
Anybody got any questions? This might be placed on the agenda.
Yes, we do have to have a public hearing, so we'll advertise one first.
Anybody got any questions at all? Okay, go ahead and set it up then. Next item tonight is zoning ordinance. Matt?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have, I'm gonna turn it over to Tim Wilson so he can discuss some of the items on opposed zoning ordinances relates to apartments. The summary is that there's been a recent formal proposal and several inquiries related to reuse, redevelopment of property for apartment use. And going through the town code, we believe there's some areas of improvement. I'll turn it over to Mr. Wilson.
Thank you. Yeah, what I did, I tried to just compile information on how apartments are permitted under the zoning ordinance, you know, where they're permitted and get that together for you. I have had some recent inquiries. I guess one of the common threads, which we wanted the manager mentioned on Maine and Church, is that these have all been requests that have occurred on properties that are in the C2 or the downtown business district, and they've all involved parcels that were less than an acre, smaller in size, and were already currently developed. Some of these requests and inquiries were to demolish in part and rebuild, some were to use the existing buildings, but for different reasons, each of the proposals failed to meet one of the requirements. Probably the most important one would be the density requirement. And basic to that is the definition for apartments, and you become classified as an apartment use once you hit three dwelling units, individual dwelling units. So you could have a business, say downtown, if you wanted to have two residential units over top, and if you met certain basic requirements, that would be allowed. But it's when you hit that third unit that you then go into a new use classification, and then all of the regulations that come to bear on apartments are there. And as you can see, they're considerable. There's one section, you know, I put in each, in the report where they're permitted in each district, but if you go to the supplemental provisions and the ordinance and a couple of the areas where it lists the use as being permitted, and they're permitted by both right and by special use in some various commercial and residential districts, there is a common thread in the supplementary provisions that you find in Section 175, 113, apartments. And it begins with a very simple sentence. All apartment developments shall comply with the following regulations. So that means regardless of what the district regulations may be, even if they're more favorable, there's a conflict between those regulations and the regulations that are in almost the three pages here found under apartments, the more restrictive provisions are going to apply. As I mentioned earlier, the ones that I've dealt with, that I've had the inquiries from, if you look under the supplemental provisions there, the first section, A, B, C, D, E, they all deal with the smaller parcel sizes. It's when you get up to F, which then sets the standard for a, where the majority of regulations are pertaining to apartment developments that are on a parcel that are one acre or larger. And I think those are really meant and designed for your more traditional, your larger, brand-new hotel development. But I just wanted to bring it to council's attention. You know, I'm not saying that there's a problem with the ordinance, but there have been instances, especially in the C2 district, existing buildings, trying to make apartments there that has seemed to be a problem. People are looking at putting more units in than what the ordinance will allow. And part of that is where the supplemental regulations, the way the ordinance is written, it kicks in and requires automatically the minimum lot size for apartment development is 10,000 square feet, to use the example of the project you're familiar with downtown at the corner of Church. That parcel is 9,753 square feet, so that right there ruled it out for apartment use. So there could be two apartment units on that. So I think if there is an issue, it's probably with this first set of regulations under the supplemental provisions that deal with the smaller ones and how they trump everything in the other zoning districts, whether it be C2, C3. And it might be an issue that council, one option would be maybe to make in that or particular zoning district, make it by special use. And instead of making these strict and hard, fast standards, you could employ them as guidelines would be, you know, that would provide you some flexibility to look at them on a case-by-case basis. But as the ordinance stands now, even where the uses are permitted by special use underneath the ordinance, not even council can relieve or excuse or reduce a basic standard requirement of the ordinance. So right now, you do not have that type of flexibility with this two and a half pages of regulation.
Thanks, Tim. So as a recap, Mr. Mayor, members of council, what my suggestion would be is that you let staff come up with some, rewrite some of those sections and then change some of it to guidelines and make it more accommodating for appropriate growth and appropriate development as opposed to some of these more stringent language that's in there is very restrictive as we see it. So wanted to bring it to council tonight before we put forth all that time to see if that's a general sense of moving forward.
Yeah, sounds good.
That's what I was, I was gonna say, what were your suggestions going to be? So yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Tim, I just wanted to comment. Thank you for bringing us our attention. I love it when we find areas of opportunity where we're going to become a little bit more friendly towards development and thinking a little bit more creatively about that. So any flexibility that we're able to, you know, write into the ordinance would be great so that we don't have to just draw a hard line and tell people no. So I really appreciate you taking the time and spending the energy to look through this and try to figure out how to keep it as intact as possible to alleviate or create a little bit of flexibility for new projects.
Yeah, also, Tim, I agree with that. Matt, when these changes are brought forward, will they come, they'll come to us and then we'll send them on back to the planning commission?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's important that the council gives its input.
Yeah.
And let the planning commission review it and discuss it. I mean, that's clearly our option to do that.
I mean, is that the way you guys want to do it? Because that's normally what we do in an ordinance change.
So we give it input and then we send it?
Bring it to us, we review it, and if we got any question, then we send it to the planning commission if there's any possible changes. And then it'll come back to us for final approval.
Does it have to go to the planning commission?
Yes.
Something like that?
It will, eventually, any ordinance amendment will have to be initiated by formal either by this body or the planning commission. Then it'll be a public hearing by the planning commission, a recommendation, public hearing by this body and formal vote. But if you wish to send it first to the planning commission for any comment before that process is initiated, that's absolutely your prerogative.
I didn't realize it had to go to the planning commission first.
That's what I'm wondering.
It doesn't. As I said, it's your prerogative.
Okay, yeah.
Being something of this magnitude, I would think it should go to the planning commission personally.
Well, I think the question is not, does it go with timing of it? I think.
Oh, no, I agree with that.
Let us kind of flush it out internally and give them what our suggestions are and seek their wisdom. Okay? Makes sense? Good, thank you.
Okay. Next item tonight is item three, planning commission membership.
Mr. Mayor, this is not, this is something that we've been discussing for a while now. As you know, the ordinance stipulates seven members of the planning commission. And there's been, it's been really difficult over the last year to get full members of the planning commission. And staff was discussing perhaps it might be best just to go to a five-member board. We have, one member is a, the code, correct me the exact wording of it, Tim, but I think one member is a possible member of council that is appointed to the board, and the other one is a non-voting, is that right? Or citizen, a citizen appointment?
Correct. The Code of Virginia allows one person from the governing body to sit on the planning commission and one person from the administrative branch. Our local code incorporates that idea, but with a twist. If you appoint one of those, either a council or an administrative, they become, they're designated as ex officio. They're not a voting member.
Right. So we just take some time to clean it up and wanted to get your input on that.
I'm down with this. I think it should go to the five, and if it becomes an issue later or really want to add more people, we can.
Change it around?
Yeah.
Then you can always add a person to ex officio.
Yeah.
I was gonna ask your opinion because you served on the planning commission. So you think reducing it to five is the way to go?
Well, I mean, I think in light of the fact that we've had a difficult time, you know, appointed to it, there's always good people on the planning commission who are very engaged, but I think that's what you want. You want engaged individuals, you don't want to just fill seats for the heck of it or because we need to get to seven. And remember, we're also asking these individuals to complete the small town planning certification, which isn't just a one-day-go-down-and-get-it certification. I mean, it's an investment of time. So I would rather have quality, five good individuals who are invested in our planning commission than quantity and trying to fill those seats personally.
Mr. Stacey, do you have a five-member Board of Zoning Appeals and a five-member Board of Architectural Review? They both deal with regulatory development matters, and this seems more just than?
Want us to get it written up?
I'm good with that.
All right. Next item tonight is item four, disconnections of non-tenant.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, we put this on anticipating we would have some additional information, but as the summary reads, I guess it was two weeks ago, the last week and a half, the House and the Senate budget bill conferences reached an agreement despite our best efforts and those of various associations and letters sent from all localities in Virginia as well as MPF and Blue Ridge Power, the governor, the governor was successful in including all utilities in a shut-off ban and the repayment plan provisions. So last week, we had intended to move money from our contingency back into our operating budget due to the fact of how strong our finances were. We were over budget, about $37,000, approximately 14% in sales tax. Our meals tax are right in line. So I mean, from a, so we've done a really good job at bringing down our delinquent utility accounts down to 464,000, I believe. 464,000 from the high point of about 900,000. I mean, finance department's done an outstanding job, and now the General Assembly in their infinite wisdom has decided that they want to legislate from Richmond as to how localities will handle shut-offs. The good news in all this, it appears there is an exemption clause that's going to be in the, in the, in the final bill. Once the governor signs it, that will, that we believe we can qualify for from a, as a locality. And the nuances of that have not yet been finalized. BJ, is there anything you wanted to add to that?
That's correct. It has not been finalized, but we're continuing to monitor it very closely because it's definitely going to have an impact on us. Hopefully, we'll be able to obtain an exemption and move forward with normal business operations.
In the event that that doesn't happen, I haven't been following that bill specifically. What does that mean to us?
The bill's passed. So it's, it passed.
In the event that the exception doesn't?
At the exception, that means we can hopefully continue as we currently are.
But if we're not, then we drive it back up to?
Yeah, we not drive it up to, well, probably more than that. What's going to happen as soon as people find out, you know, there's many people out there who are struggling right now, and I was on the phone with one today. And BJ, you're gonna be upset with me tomorrow morning, but I was with one today, and we're doing everything we can as a governing body to work out these payment arrangements. But the fact of the matter is, when you have individuals that are curling month after month after month after month of non-payments, you know, how long until they dig themselves a hole that they can't get out of? And it's really, frankly, we've, you know, we've shown a lot of compassion, we've been very, very good about working down our delinquent accounts, and it's just unfortunate that many jurisdictions in Virginia are going to be, are going to be left holding the bag with a lot of money. So we just didn't feel comfortable, we still don't feel comfortable yet as a staff to recommend moving the money out of contingency just yet until that final bill is, the governor ratifies it. And we clearly understand what the, what that exclusion clause is going to, how, exactly how it's going to read. Basically, on BJ's interpretation of it, we're fairly confident we're going to qualify, but we feel better just waiting to be certified.
Is it subsidized at all?
No, no word of it being subsidized.
Just you can't collect money?
Mm-hmm.
And you have to still provide service?
There is a clause in it that says that some care's money will be set aside, but there's no word as to how that's going to be allocated, who it will go to, how it'll be distributed.
Does that only apply to municipalities providing their own utility services, or does that apply to the dominion powers of the world?
Dominion power, everyone.
I saw something in the paper was last week, some locality was like shutting off.
Winchester.
The Winchester, like 30 plus a day?
Yeah, that's Frederick County water and dirty.
Yeah, I was gonna say, having read the newspaper, that I think we actually are in a much better situation than what some of the other localities are. So thank you for all your efforts and for the citizens' efforts to try to at least make, you know, repayment arrangements. But I'm just saying from seeing some of the other numbers, we are far better off than what some of the other localities. However, that could also mean we could be right where they are.
Yes, add a few months, and yeah, we very well could be.
Yeah, so. It's tough.
So we plan, you know, we planned for this, and we have the money in contingency. Fortunately, we've just been managing, managing that piece very well. And so I think waiting until December, late November, early December to approve the contingency, go back in operating budget, I think that still gives us time to execute it January, January 1st or thereafter. So we just wanted to give you, give you an update on that possible scenario. No action needed.
Any other questions? Okay. Next item tonight is item five, TLC termination letter.
Yes, and TLC is not tender loving care. Let me hand this out.
You were practicing that one all night, weren't you?
Yeah, I was hoping a friend would be in here so I could say that. I'm gonna hand it out, termination letter. I just got this today as well.
I got my two, Matt.
Doug, do you have, Laura, you have your copy?
Yes.
Of both these documents?
Yes.
Both of them? I have two for the press. I have. I can email it to her. Anyone else here? No, here. Sorry for that delay. I should have had those waiting on your seat. May I proceed, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
So for some background, there's been some serious discussions between Valley Health and our local choice. The, there appears to be an impasse as it relates to Anthem and Valley Health coming to terms, which is forcing all the jurisdictions in our region to determine how they're going to handle getting individuals our plan, which is Anthem, covered through Valley Health if there's no, if they're not considered in our primary culture. So our consultant has advised us to send a letter of termination, states, "Due to the situation with Valley Health, the town of Front Royal will terminate their coverage effective January 31st. If the situation changes with Valley Health and Anthem, the town of Front Royal reserves the right to rescind this termination 30 days prior to the termination date, December 31st, 2020. If you have any questions, contact Julie Bush." Here's a memo, here's a, there's a memo that's attached that shows various, various highlights. I'm not going to go through any of these in great detail. The second page, I think, is important as far as it relates to a timeline. You know, fortunately, we have these consultants on retainer, and it's been a real blessing. November 1st, terminate the agreement. November 6th, market analysis update. They've already done a significant amount of market analysis already in preparation for our health assurance that we currently have. Week of November 9th, working meetings on marketing. Early December, decision on plans and next steps. Mid-December, communication development, update EASE. Summer 31st, rescind termination if necessary. January, early January, O E employees, February 1st effective date. So there, just to put you on notice, members of council, Mr. Mayor, that for the month of January, in the event that town government does plan to continue with the full termination with Anthem, that the month of January could be problematic in the event that some individuals get sick, they may have to go to Culpeper, or they may have to pay additional fees. So Laura, is there, I know I gave a real high review. If you want to, feel free to say anything in particular which you want to touch on.
Unless they have questions about any of it.
And we've kept most of you informed based upon the resolution that you sent at the last meeting as well, so then this is not new information to council, but this is a formal. And Doug, Doug and Laura, I believe that I can administratively send that, that termination letter, correct? Yeah. Any questions for the council?
I know Warren County, I believe, County Public Schools is doing something similar to. I think I imagine a lot of people right now are trying to figure out what to do and where to go, so.
Okay, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
I guess I need, I guess I need, is council okay with me sending this letter? Do you want me to?
You don't have any choice, do you?
I don't, we do, but neither the staff and the consultant, so.
Oh, and you say it's a shame.
Well, apparently, this is, this has happened before with Anthem, another jurisdiction, and they ended up resolving their, their fee schedule and their differences in January, so this is not uncommon by Anthem to do this. So, you know, we'll see what happens.
So our, our employees would have insurance coverage up until, they would, they would remain insured, just not they'd be out of network if they went somewhere else in January, right? I mean, if they went to Valley Health, right?
Correct, yeah.
So they still retain their insurance, but their fees might be higher if they chose to go to Valley Health versus to go to, say, Falkir or Culpeper or places like that.
It's no different than your insurance coverage where it has the out-of-network benefits.
Right.
So you lose the premier tier and go to the much higher out-of-pocket tiers.
So that's how it will affect our employees. Okay. We don't have any choice, I guess.
And, and the 31st will determine, we have the ability to terminate with, with Anthem at that time and go to another carrier if we choose to. Now, if we go to another carrier, let's remember, there's an adverse experience adjustment, which is in the document, which is what we were hoping to get through this year. I mean, we saved over $400,000 in health insurance this year, so we've saved a significant amount of money. We budgeted $200,000 of the savings, and we basically planned to apply the other $200,000 towards this adverse adjustment. There's some very positive discussions due to the fact that town of Front Royal was very forward-thinking in retaining the services of this healthcare consultant. We had them on a phone call with the entire region, the Northern Shandell Valley region, about possibly coming together and pooling our, our employees together to drive down the cost of insurance. We had a wonderful presentation with a insurance pool that Gallagher put together and runs and administers in North Carolina. The first year, and Laura helped me, the first year, I think they saved, they put $12 million in reserve, or is that the second year?
I think now they have $12 million.
Now they have, the third year of that.
It started like $5 million.
Yeah, I think the first year, they were able to put $5 million into the reserve, drove down the cost significantly. Because of the purchasing power of the pool, they were able to drive down the cost of prescription drugs that they acquire. And so if you remember, and I don't know if you remember last year when Gallagher was going through their presentation, they talked about wanting to possibly set up a pool in Virginia because there were some jurisdictions already who had contacted them, wanting them to do a pool. One of them is a very, very close county, okay? Relatively large county that wanted to do a pool, but there wasn't enough, there wasn't a large enough size of people interested just yet. The Northern Shandell Valley may be the spearhead to push this, and if that's the case, it appears based upon the positive results of the call, it possibly July 1st, we could go to a pooled insurance model with many other jurisdictions, probably in the neighborhood of 2,000 to 3,500 total employees.
That'd be awesome.
It'd be significant. The cost of the, so the, the insurance increase over the five years in North Carolina, I think it was 2.8%.
The average of the whole five years?
Yeah, average over the five years, 2.8%.
So your risk is spread so much more.
Risk is spread, and, and they're not, you know, right now, the way it is, people are profiting that, there's a lot of money being made on this current plan that we're in. Whereas now, if you can self-insure, pool your resources and have that, build up those reserves, it's just, it's something to really think about in the future. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Any other questions on any of those? All right, next item tonight is a closed meeting. Somebody read us into the closed meeting.
I'm with the town council going to a closed meeting for the purpose, for the following purposes, to discuss, discussions, consideration or interviews of respective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance salaries for resignation of specific public officers, appointees or employees of the public body, so into Section 2.2-3711.1A.1 of the Code of Virginia. Two, with respect to the town's lawsuit against the EDA consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members and consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation where such consultation or briefing in open meeting adversely affect the negotiation, negotiating or legislating posture of the public body. Probable litigation, meaning litigation that has been specifically threatened or on which public body or its legal counsel has a reasonable basis to believe will be commenced by or against a known party pursuant to Section 2.2-3711.1.
by or against a known party, pursuant to Section 2.2-3711. Point eight, point seven of the Code of Virginia.
Your second.
Second.
All voters say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried.